Falls City Council Meeting for Tuesday, November the 13th to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abidi.
Present.
Althoff.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Lundell.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
And Mayor Robinson. Here. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, everyone, to the first meeting in November, and at this time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda I submitted.
Second.
Motion by Bill, second by Ken. Any discussion, additions, subtractions? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carries. Let's move this on to public input this evening. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minute. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments must be pertinent to city business and here to data practice rules, privacy rules. No employees' names may be used. Personal attacks will not be tolerated.
Babel Gorman, 2698 O Michael Avenue, Cannon Falls. I was here at your last meeting about a month ago about a campaign sign that the chief of police pulled off my property. We still haven't resolved the problem. Mayor, you told me you were gonna look into it.
I don't see out there as a problem.
Well, I do. The only alternative I have, since we don't have any Police Commission meetings anymore, you will not allow me to discuss this privately like grownups in a nice, calm setting, and I'm trying to stay calm.
That's fine.
I think I've been doing a pretty good job of it. So that's one sign that got pulled off a public right-of-way, city right-of-way. There was a major investigation by the Lake City Police Department to determine that that's a right-of-way out there. Wasn't that tough to figure? I've known it all along. It's pretty simple. They're all over town, but that one sign got pulled. There were literally hundreds of them in the right-of-way throughout town. There's two up on Mill Street that are actually in the street. Ain't getting picked up. Now, I'm wondering how long this is gonna drag out, because we are going to resolve this. Maybe it takes a new mayor and a new council, because you're not doing anything about it. But then you're good at that, aren't you?
So are you.
Yeah. Yeah, I do little or nothing. And there is one other point, matter of record. The local editor of the paper has claimed that I've made libelous statements. I have not, at all, and I want to make that clear. The statement he's referring to was that as a council member, Mike Dalton was a complete failure, and that's a fact. And you, sir, are right there with him.
Anybody else wishing to address the council under public input?
Good evening, council. I'm Kyle Paulson from the Cannon Falls Area Chamber of Commerce. I would like to start off with thanking everyone in Cannon Falls and the area for our trick-or-treat trot that was on October 31st. We had between 650 and 675 children in one hour. And that is, we also had almost 40 businesses participating that night in giving out candy. And so thank you to all the families, to all the businesses. We really appreciate that. Onto our next event is Deck the Falls. And on Saturday, November 24th, there will be another parade at 5:00 PM. We currently have 23 units in the parade. So it's gonna take some time coming down Fourth Street and going to Mill Street. So I hope a lot of families and friends come out to see everyone's great parade units and join us down into the community parking area for the lighting of the tree and the holiday drawings. We'll be giving away $900 worth of prizes. Any questions? Thank you very much. Also, thank you to the donors and sponsors who have helped bring in those cash dollars for the tree lights, the prize money. We really do appreciate all of your support. Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle.
Hi, I'm Kyle Rapp, 615 North Oak Street, and I'd like to discuss the special assessments.
I haven't weighed onto that yet.
We're not doing that right now?
Nope.
Okay.
That comes under the public hearing.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else wishing to address the council under public input? If not, we will move on to Item 6, which will be public hearings. The first one is Resolution 2391 certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes. Linnell?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the public hearing that is held to allow our customers to have an opportunity to speak regarding a delinquent water bill. If it remains delinquent, it will be assessed to the property taxes for collection in 2019. This will be the final one for the 2019 collection.
All right, with that, we, at this time, we will open up the public hearing for Resolution 2391 certifying delinquent water sewer bills for taxes. Is there anybody wishing to address the council under the public hearing for utility Is there anyone wishing to address the council under the public hearing for utility charges? Is there anyone wishing to address the council under the public hearing for utility charges? If not, at this time, we'll close the public hearing, and Chair will take a motion to approve Resolution 2391 certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes.
So move. Second.
Motion by Morris, second by Ken. Any further discussion?
It's down a little bit, isn't it?
Yep, it's down quite a bit from the last time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carries. Move this on to Resolution 2396, which is adopting assessments for 2018 street improvement projects. Linnell?
Thank you, Mayor. As you can see, our city engineer is approaching the podium. He can review the project and all that entailed with that, and then the assessments and how they were calculated. But this is the public hearing for the special assessments for the 2018 East Side 2 Improvement Project. Notices were sent and published in the paper. So when he opens the public hearing, that will be the, your opportunity to come forward and make any comments or concerns known to the city council regarding the amount of the assessments.
All right. Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So as Linnell said, we're here for the improvement hearing for the 2018 street project, also known as East Side 2 Project. As the council's done with other reconstruct projects, you have gone down the road to assess a portion of the project cost back to the benefiting properties, and the assessment hearing is kind of the last step in that process. We finished up construction. We prepared construction costs, come up with the estimated, the final assessments, and that was in the letter that the city sent out, and that's what we're here to discuss tonight. Just a quick review of the project. It generally included Minnesota Street from Second all the way down to the school and the side streets of Almond Grove, Vine, Oak, and Cedar. And then we also did the block and a half of Mill Street from Grove up the hill to the west as a reconstruct, which means new sewer, new water, storm sewer, new curb and gutter, new street. And then the blue stretch of Grove and the cul-de-sac of Mill and the cul-de-sac of Grove, that was a mill and overlay. We just milled off one layer of asphalt, put a new one on top. They were assessed at a different rate than the other ones. Just a couple notes on the project. The work is by and large done. We did get the sod down on the boulevards. It did not have a chance to start growing, so we have not started any growing days. We have not accepted the sod, but it's down. We hope we get a good winter as far as snow, not too much cold, and it'll be there to start growing in the spring. We'll do a full walkthrough of the project in the spring. Anything that does not grow will be replaced, and we'll work with the contractor through the warranty period on that in the spring. We just needed to get it down, get it covered up as part of his permit with the PCA for the construction project. All disturbed areas need to be covered. We plant, we've always restored with sod in the boulevard areas, and he got that down here before the cold weather hit. But if there's any concerns about that, please let us know, but to know, but everyone should know that it's not accepted. We'll be reviewing it in the spring, and same with the trees and the sidewalk and the curb and the street. We did a walkthrough last week. There'll be a few things the contractor will do here over the next week and a week and a half, but by and large, most of the stuff to address on the punch list will be done in the spring. And once we get everything done on the punch list, council will get final payout. Once final payout's approved, we start the warranty, which on this project is two years. As we've done in the past on these reconstructs, the councils decided to do a per-unit or per-lot parcel assessment, so the assessments are on the each, if you will, and what that includes is we take the entire project costs. We figure 20% of that cost. We figure that over the amount, the total number of parcels in the project area. Simple, you know, simple equation. We have much cost, the many parcels, it's this much per parcel. In the feasibility report that the council approved last spring, the full reconstruct areas had an estimated assessment of 7,550. We got done with construction. The final assessments you're considering tonight for the reconstruct areas are 7,122. So they're about $400 less than we thought they'd be in the report based on the bid costs and the project costs. Similarly, with the mill and overlay portions in the blue, the report had estimated a cost, an assessment per lot of 1,688. The final assessments you're considering tonight are 1,013 per parcel in the blue areas. As I mentioned, the assessments, the assessments are based on per lot. In areas where we have a large parcel or a large units, what we've done there in the instance of the park, the school parking lot, we take the zoning for that area, figure out how many single-family lots would have fit, and that's how many we get. So the school parking lot, we could put four lots in there. They got four assessments for that parcel they have on Mill Street. Similarly, with the city park and down at the townhomes on the other end, we did the same thing. There, we counted the number of units we served on this side, and here, we just use the parcel size. In the mill and overlay, we did the same thing with the cemetery. City Attorney is here tonight, weighed in. There is a possibility to assess the cemetery, but probably not. We can ask him for a little more opinion on that when we get there. But we did assess the St. Pius Cemetery, four units, because they could fit four parcels here. Granted, it's the cemetery now, it's probably not gonna be four houses anytime soon. And the cemetery, the other cemetery to the east had frontage on the cul-de-sac down here on Grove Street. We assigned them one unit as they had similar frontage as the other ones. They had a similar use, maybe, maybe not, but that was the thinking on why they got an assessment there. Any questions from council on how we ended up, where we ended up, and what we ended up with?
I mean, at this time, anybody else?
Just, there's, I know there's a couple of questions out there for the folks in the alleys. We don't have them highlighted here, but the alleys highlighted, but the parcels are highlighted. Some of the parcels with the alleys behind them that front State Street, we have sewer or water, or water, sewer and water in those alleys. We either replaced it or lined it on these alleys. Some of them had water in the front. We did not do the water in the front in State, but we did pave these three alleys when we were done. We did the water and/or sewer and street in those areas. I assigned them a full reconstruct them out. You might have some people questioning that tonight, but that was the thinking. We did the, we did the infrastructure in the area, water or sewer or both, and paved the alley and did the street adjacent to their alley. Therefore, we assigned them a full unit.
Any questions for Greg? All right, at this time, we will open up the public hearing for the East Side 2 Project.
All right, sorry about the last time. See, my name's Kyle Rapp, 615 North Oak Street, and I'm, this property right here for the general overlay of the whole project. And what I'd like to show you is I got my abstract with, the list lays out my abstract for that property, and this is what is highlighted here, 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 and here. This lot right here is owned by the city of Cannon Falls, and then Oak Street comes down here and stops right here. I have an easement to cross this lot to get to my property, and as long as I maintain the road. It was something when I bought the place in 1996, January 96, and I talked with said administrator, then Dallas Larson. Says, as long as I maintain that road, you have an easement to cross that. I've been looking through my abstract, and I did do a GIS on it. Here's that GIS, and it doesn't show up, this lot right here, which, looking at other things, it doesn't show up when the city owns it. There's no GIS pin number on it. So you guys do own that lot, and in fact, Dallas in January or February 94 or 96, he tried to sell me this lot. He wanted to know if I wanted to buy that, and I refused to buy that. Wanted to just keep it the way it was. So what my question is, is I have no property of abutting anything that's on any streets or anything, and in my abstract, I found some information. I don't know if it's pertinent, but it's your, when they do the, when you buy the property, you do an assessment. This is the, like, the assessment that I did when I bought it in January. It's hard to read. I guess if you guys want to look at it, I can hand it up to you. In January 96, and it just shows that there's no assessments for sanitary sewer, water main, or any of that when I purchased it. The water main stuff was assessed in 1993 for $943 when they put new water and they hooked that said property up, because it wasn't hooked up to city water then. It was hooked up then, and the assessment was 943 with a hookup of $300. So those assessments were paid on water and stuff. My question then, when I do look at the back, it kind of gives a special assessment policy, and I can hand this to you guys if you want to see it, but line number one is street surfaces. Talks about many streets in city Cannon Falls have appearance in having been improved by street surface. While there is a batuminous surface, it's very thin. These surfaces are developed from a buildup of oil through several years of oily and gravel streets. These streets can usually be identified by their severe crown in the center by an irregular surface. The sentence here is what I consider is, property of abutting these streets is subject to special assessment with no credit for the previous dust seal. Corner lots are subject to assessment on both sides of the property. Well, I have no property of abutting any said streets. So I guess what I'm asking the council is, I feel that I don't need to pay this $1,013 special assessment. Yes, I do come down that street, but so does the general public. That's my question to you guys. I'd like to, if you guys have any questions, if you want to see this up close, I can bring it to you to show it to you.
I guess my first question, and for you, David, is if that is a city-owned lot, abutting the street in question, is, is that the case? Because it seems to me if that is a city lot, then Kyle probably shouldn't be assessed for something that's not abutting his property.
So, members of council, I'm David Kendall with Kamala Koots in the city attorney's office. A property that does not directly abut the public improvement can still be assessed if that property benefits from that improvement. If the city owns a lot there, the city has to look to its policy regarding, you know, the engineer talked about, the city assessed itself on the public park lots and some other lots. City would potentially have to look at whether it needs to assess that city lot if it hasn't already done so. But if the council and the engineer feel that there is benefit to that, his property from his, this project, it can still be assessed even if it doesn't directly abut the improvement. It used to be that a lot of the assessment policies were on a front-footage basis, and obviously, that would be calculated, you know, you have to abut to have front footage. Cities have changed a lot now, and a lot of policies involve traffic counts or residential units. So that does not necessarily require that you directly abut the improvement. You have to benefit from the improvement, though.
Are we, and Linnell, maybe you can answer this. That lot in question that Kyle says belonged to the city, are we assessing that lot? As I see on this list of things that we do assess some areas, but why don't we assess that lot?
I believe because we were assessing the adjoining property owner.
I think it is.
You can maybe answer that better than I can.
I think if you look under Kyle Rapp.
Yeah, I'm wondering if that's the other.
Is that city? I think that must be the other.
I don't know, because I don't know what the pin number is for it.
That lot, since, you know, with Kyle's figure from the county, it didn't show up or have a pin.
Mm-hmm.
It just shows up as part of the city right-of-way. We didn't assess it, but to the attorney's point, you know, there is benefit. This is the only access to his property. We entered the improvement near his property. I would argue there's benefit there. How much, I assigned him a mill and overlay portion like the other projects, but that was the thinking. We did not assess there because there's no city pin for that parcel, whether it was never recorded back when this was put together, or if it was vacated. It might not have been vacated because Oak Street's over here. I don't have the explanation for why the parcel doesn't show up in the county base, but that's the reason it didn't have a pin, so we didn't assess it because it didn't exist as a lot based on the county parcel data.
Now, on the West Side project, there was those condos or whatever you want to call, and what was it, four of them or something like that? And they were, we forgave something because they used the road, so they, that's what they had to pay, or if I remember right.
We forgave some water and sewer stuff because of the amount of services. So that's not gonna be related to this question.
No, no, I know, but I mean, again, it was because the statement was made that they will use the road.
Yes.
And that, that's why.
To the attorney's point, the, it's benefit. It doesn't necessarily abutting. The same principle applies if you did a road here and you had a cul-de-sac, and the only access to this neighborhood is this road. There's benefit. Is it 100% benefit? That's probably the argument there. But is there benefit exists just because he doesn't physically abut the improvement potentially? I would say there's some benefit there, and that's why I approved it and put it on the list and for you guys to decide. To Mr. Mattson's point on the townhomes, we had a fourplex on the West Side 2 Project. The attorney at that time, based on other assessments and stuff, came to determination that those were a .8 per unit versus a full share unit, so each of the four got .8 of a full assessment. We have the same thing here next to the park. We have a fourplex. There are four pins there for the garage. There, again, I assigned each of those a .8 share of a reconstruct. But it does go back to your argument, a benefit. They're using the facilities, they're using the infrastructure.
Back to Mr. Rapp's point that he's raised here. So the easement is a type of a property value. Obviously, it's a type of a property ownership, and if you were to ever sell the parcels that you own, you would, a future owner is gonna require that easement come with it. It's part of the package, the bundle.
Perpetual easement. I remember discussing that with Dallas when I purchased it.
Yep.
Says, as long as you maintain it.
Yep.
You can have easement to cross that property.
It's part of your property rights now. And that easement does abut the improved thing. The easement runs into what was improved.
Yeah, but it's not my, it's not my property. My question is, is if I'm the only one that uses this, why wasn't I asked if I wanted it resurfaced then or not? Why is it just get done? I mean, I probably wouldn't have said no. I mean, I ain't gonna pay for that when, when the general public uses it. I get bikers that come down there and park on my property. They park down there and use the bike trail. There are other people that have access to that, and the mayor does live down there. He has access down that, and there's two others that use the same thing. I'm just wondering why I'm getting nailed for the whole works, and I just feel that I, I wasn't asked why I'm getting hit for it. So, because I, according to what I understand in my abstract, if you've guys gotten rid of that policy from 1996 that this is dated, that anything abutting property I should not have to pay assessments on. So that's what I got right in here. Leave it up to you guys if you have any other questions or... If I had property abutting here, I would not even stop. Tell you that, but I don't.
I mean, it does, I mean, you do have, I know for a fact, you use the, that going down there all the way, and it does go across that area and connects right to your property, because I use it to go to the alley going the other way, because, to get to my property on the backside. So, I mean, there is usage there.
Yep, and I do, and to iterate, too, is I maintain that half the time, because I have to plow it out. I don't get plowed out right away, and I have to plow it out to make sure I can get what two-wheel-drive vehicle I have down there that needs to get out. But I do, I do open it up half the time. I won't say all the time, but, oh, it might be different now that we have a new Public Works Director, but...
David, I guess I would ask you, Cedar brought up a good point. He has a permanent easement. Is that considered quasi-property ownership?
Yeah, the easement is a property right in his favor. He's saying his property doesn't directly abut the city street, and that may be true, but if he derives benefit, if his particular property derives benefit from this project, you have the option to assess him. It doesn't, it sounds to me like the engineer's saying that the current policy is a unit policy, so you're not assessing it based on front footage abutting the street, you're basing it on the unit, which is legal. So... So, it's up to the council, but you can legally assess him if you want to.
I have to say, I really applaud your research. I mean, you have your, brought your abstract. I just don't think the result is what, I don't think, well...
Up to council. It's up to council.
It is, it's up to council. But it's not impermissible for council to assess you. But it would be discretionary. And you're asking for discretion.
It's up to you guys. I'm asking you guys to vote. I don't want to pay the assessments because I, it's not abutting anything of mine, and I don't, I don't see whether it's tarred or if it's gravel where it benefits me. I couldn't care less. I mean, I got gravel right now.
I think the benefit flows to the property, not the individual. Because you're right, there's a lot of folks out there that probably liked the road just fine the way it was.
It probably actually doesn't benefit me to a point that runoff now comes down on my property more easily because of the harder surface. And it all flows right down to me. It's all downhill, all this downhill, all this from here is all downhill to me.
What's up to the council?
Well, to me, the sticking point is, is the easement, the permanent easement. I mean, if there wasn't an easement there, Kyle, I would gladly say, no, we shouldn't assess you, but because of the permanent easement, that's what makes it harder in my mind to not assess. Because you're getting access to your property through there.
Well, it's an easement for me to access that was granted years ago...
Right.
Before, it's a perpetual easement. But I don't own the property. What's the difference if I don't own the property? I mean, it's the same thing if you go out in the township and you have an easement going through someone's farmland. For a driveway, you have to maintain the road, but they own it. You own that road. I just maintain it.
And that's why I asked David here about, you know, a quasi-ownership thing. That's, that's the sticking point for me that I...
So, this in my abstract don't mean anything then? In this legal document, original?
I'm not a legal person, so I could not answer that.
Well, I guess I ask you guys if, I guess if you don't, if you don't vote for it, I am going to fight it and appeal it because I don't have $1,000 to give you right now, and I don't want to stretch it out at five and a half percent. That's ridiculous. So, leave it up to you guys and...
Any further discussion about the sheriff taking a motion to either approve or disapprove? Do we do that during this portion, or do we discuss it further?
So, I'm going to be part of a whole group. It's either you're not going to assess them or not, and there's no special cases.
No, we'll address each... That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying they'll, they'll address each of the concerns under one motion.
Any questions?
Hi, my name is Sean Carpenter. I represent the St. Pius Cemetery here. We had an assessment of over $4,000 for this property. We just got the bituminous overlay. By your logic, splitting into four parcels, that would be split probably this way, although it can never be split into parcels, it can never be changed. It can, we should be considered more of one parcel at the very most. And if we are paying 20% of the total cost of the project with all these houses here, I can't believe that that blacktop cost over $150,000. So, I would like at this time to figure out how our assessment worked into the plan.
Which parcel are we talking about?
We are the St. Pius Cemetery. Now, this property here at 523, they paid $1,000. They paid $1,000. So, by my logic, at the very most we should ever pay is $2,000.
But there's frontage here for four lots if they went this way.
But there's, it only matches up to two lots there.
That, that doesn't matter. The zoning would allow me to...
This guy's got one lot. You can't turn it into lots. That's not possible.
That's a separate question. You asked me how I came up with it. There's the frontage for four lots.
But it's cemetery.
Now, now would be maybe the time we ask the attorney, Dwayne, because there, you are allowed in some cases to assess cemeteries publicly, correct? But there are some thresholds.
Right. So, there is a exemption in state statute for cemeteries owned by churches? If it's a private cemetery, you can assess it. If it's a church-owned cemetery, the statute is Minnesota Statute 307.09. And it says that if it's a church-owned cemetery, that is, let me find the correct language If the cemetery is more than 300 acres, or if it's not laid out and dedicated as a private cemetery, or it will not remain appropriated to the use as a cemetery, as in the use is going to change sometime in the foreseeable future, then you may still assess it. If it is currently dedicated as a cemetery owned by a church and not more than 300 acres, then there's an exemption in state law for special assessment of the cemetery.
Can't be. If it fell in that exception, it could not be assessed.
It cannot be assessed.
Right. How many acres is St. Pius Cemetery? Just to be clear. Okay, well then, it sounds like we have...
You don't have a lot of latitude or discretion in this situation unless...
Right. St. Pius fits under the exemption. We are prohibited by state law from assessing St. Pius. Boom. I'm sorry, but like, we don't have to talk that much more about it.
Yep.
That would still bring to question, don't we, even for the, for the other people involved too? What was the entire cost of that overlay? And do they go under that 20% rule then?
Yes, the entire, the cost to do all the work in blue, 20% of that cost is divided by the number of units, and that's how the assessment was derived.
So, what was the total cost?
I don't have the total in front of me, but that, that equals the $1,100 roughly assessment per unit for all the mill and overlay parcels.
That seems like an awful lot.
It was less than what we assessed, or less than we estimated in the report.
If you're getting $1,000 out of him, 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 there's $20,000 there, and that says $100,000 in blacktop.
And curb repair and milling.
The only curb repair was right there.
Well, we had to, we had to mill the surface, we had some curb repair. Blacktop's not cheap.
No. About three bucks a square foot, huh?
We pay for it by the ton.
Yeah. Well, I guess that question would go to the rest of the people, but I thank you for your time.
Well, do we make that exception for that piece of Cannon Cemetery itself too?
No, it's not.
That's not, so that, okay. Gotcha.
Hi, Andrew Eltoff, 402 Oak Street. I'm actually representing the Oak Street Condo Association. That's four addresses. That's 402, 404, 406, and 408 Oak Street North. We were assessed, here to talk about the assessment we received, we were actually assessed five, each unit, each address was assessed $5,698. And a total for the whole building is $22,792 for a building that sits on two city lots. And earlier, we talked about the 80%, the .8 figure that we are assessed for full reconstruction, which is how we get the, which is how each address gets the 5698. And I'm just here to make claim that we did not receive a full reconstruction or a new sewer. We actually received a mill and overlay and lined sewer. So, I guess I'm here to ask the council for a reassessment for what the work, what work was actually done for our properties, and that we be reassessed for just the mill and overlay and line sewer at the 80% figure.
And Greg, which property is that?
Right here across from the park.
Fourplex.
Fourplex.
Right there, the fourplex there just west of the park on the north side of State Street.
Why don't I see an assessment in the $22,000 amount on my list?
Because they're individually listed.
Bottom four, well, near the bottom four.
Class four.
Oh, the .8s, got it. Starting with Andy Eltoff, got it.
So, back to my, my opening, I, we did, on Oak Street, we did mill and overlay by the park. After we got up there and determined the water main in there wasn't going to be replaced in this one, but the sewer in the alley needed to be done. So, that's the work that was done on Oak and in the alley behind. But the rationale I used, if we did water or sewer and street work included the alley, I have assigned them a full unit on the reconstruct. This is where we have the hearing. And then, you know, the question on the sewer, while it wasn't dug up, it was lined. In my mind, lining the sewer or digging it up is kind of a horse a piece. Either one is going to last for quite a while. The choice to line some of the sewer in the alleys was just to reduce the impact and the work that would be needed to open cut those alleys and dig them up and impact the garages and the slabs. Because if you've driven down any of them alleys, you know that the stuff is not put exactly on the property lines. The alley kind of meanders. People have garages, sheds and whatnot, may or may not be in the alley. So, we worked with public works staff early on. We decided, you know what, we'll line it, and they dug up and fixed the individual services. And at the end of the day, we've got a new pipe inside the old pipe. So, whether the work was open cut or lined, we still got a new sewer and new services at the end of the day. But I did not go through and align each one. If, if they had water or sewer and street work, they went in the reconstruct column.
Any comments, questions?
In terms of benefit to the parcel, if I'm a property owner who's being assessed 7100, I got a new street and new water and new sewer? Correct? Most of them? Would I have gotten all of those things?
Most of them, and, and, you know, we did, we did a lot of storm sewer work on the Minnesota street too. A lot of that didn't have it before.
That's right, okay.
And that, we're not, you know, storm sewer's not going to go in front of every house. It's going to serve the neighborhood.
Hmm, hmm, okay. So, to compare the benefit to these parcels, if the full package, full boat, is new street, new water, new sewer, and these parcels got somewhat less than that, right? Because they didn't get new water. They got a new alley, which is not, not nothing, but it's not a new street either, right? So, it's somewhat less of the package. I guess that's probably why you did 80%.
Yeah, I think the 80%, maybe not so much the work that was done, but the impact to the infrastructure. Yes, it's two lots, as he said, size-wise, but it's four units using the infrastructure versus two houses. I think that's how the .8 was arrived at by the attorney. And we do our assessments based on a per-unit charge?
Yep.
I'm Brenda Voschallik. I'm at 408 North Oak. The other thing is, we didn't get curb and gutter. And we're four units that are on two lots also, that are being charged that .8, not four units on four lots.
Really, it's 80% of four lots, pretty much. Because they're each address, you're almost counting each address as a, as a lot. And of four lots. But we're arguing, we want to argue that we did not receive gutter, we did not receive a whole reconstruction on the street. We just received...
Exactly. I don't think, they did not grind and redo that portion of Oak, did they?
Yes, we did mill and overlay Oak. We put a new apron in the alley, but the curb and gutter on the majority of that block of Oak Street was in good shape. We decided not to take it out. So, it's there. They use both sides. We did reconstruct Cedar. If they went out the other side, they would use a new street over there. You know, I think they, they make some good points. I'm just telling you how I come up with my numbers, and this is where we put it in your folks' hands. So, Andy, is it your argument that instead of being .8, it should be like a .5?
Yeah, we could make that argument.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand your, your full argument, because a lot of this stuff, as Greg mentioned, in the project, benefits, you know, a multi-block area and so it's, I just want to be sure of your arguments.
Yeah, like, my understanding of it, so our 56, or 5,698 figure is actually 80% of full reconstruction.
Right.
And we did not receive a full reconstruction at all. So, that, I'm making, so my concern is that isn't right. You know, I want to be assessed for what was actually done.
But you did receive some work on the alley, which other parcels in this project did not get. You can see where, where, you can see where that argument could come up with other folks that, well, they didn't do anything to our alley.
But I believe on other projects you've done, they've resurfaced alleys and not assessed those properties.
So, this year too, we also did three other blocks in town, nothing with the street project, because we've been doing an ongoing alley project, and we've never, like, the other three alleys got paved this year, it never got assessed. So, I would believe including the alleys in this for assessment probably shouldn't get looked at in my eyes just because we're doing it all over town and not assessing for it. We've got, I think, four blocks worth left to do over the next year to two, and then all our alleys are paved. So, that's, that's also just not, we just included it in this project just to keep plugging them out as we go, so we don't have more to do on our own.
So, he's not arguing for a lesser percentage. He's arguing for a lesser total amount of which they would still agree to pay 80. That's what I heard your initial argument to be and what you've just repeated, so.
And that's why I raised the question of a .5 or is it a .8?
Yeah, I got it.
That would get closer to their, what they're arguing.
I think we'll take that one under consideration too.
Jill Ekstrom, I'm on State Street, and I'm actually right here. I got an alley. I don't have Vine Street, I don't have Grove. My water comes from Highway 19, but yet I'm being assessed the 7100. I know I did get sewer, but I did, we got one layer of asphalt in the alley. We did not get curb and gutter, no water main, no sidewalks or anything like that.
You got a one-way alley, though.
I got, I did get a one-way alley.
You got a one-way alley like you asked for.
And you know what? And it's been great. People are abiding by it, so I know my neighbor, I don't believe, he couldn't make it tonight, but we're both kind of in the same boat. We're both getting assessed the exact same amount as everybody else, but we don't, we didn't, we're not getting hardly any of what everybody else got.
Well, you just said the, the blacktop of the alleyway...
Yep.
And sewer?
I think sewer. I'm pretty sure they did sewer in the alley.
But your water comes from 19?
But there's also some other issues with the project. When they put the Class 5 down on all the other driveways, they did not put Class 5 on my driveway. There, there was a pile of rocks and mud and stuff that they just laid out. I did take some pictures. This is when I pulled in. It was just, it was wet, and my driveway's never done that. Even at one point in time, when I stepped in the driveway, did the same thing. You can see my, my footprint. So, I don't know what they actually put in my driveway, but it's not Class 5, like they did everybody else. And then also, when they did, they put, they didn't move my mailbox, which is fine, but when they did the alley, I pour, that's at my mailbox. They have to drive into the yard. So, I'm not sure what to be, that needs to be done about that.
So, Jill, send me those pictures, and that was part of our walkthrough last week. We will review the gravel in her driveway maybe next week if the weather allows, otherwise in the spring.
I'd say it's frozen.
Okay. And on the punch list, we've... And on the punch list, we've also added, adding gravel by the mailbox, so the letter carrier doesn't have to go mud bombing through there to deliver the mail. These are, you know, the items that come through the project and get addressed after the fact. So, I don't know why they wouldn't have had the gravel wide enough with the mailbox there the whole time, but that's why they do punch lists, and we finish stuff up before it's all closed out.
Well, Greg, her other question was, she got new sewer, and Jill, you're asking that you don't think you should pay the full cost just for that?
No, she would have this similar argument to the last one, in that the water was in state. We didn't do the water in state, because it's newer, and it was on the other side of houses. We did curb and gutter on east of U-Grove Street. We did a new alley in Vine. They used, they, they used the streets. We did storm sewer. We added storm sewer in Vine Street that wasn't there before. We added some storm sewer in the alley that wasn't there before, to try to improve some existing conditions. So, as I mentioned earlier, we have a few that are all one-way and all the others.
I'm not arguing that we didn't get this sewer or anything like that, but we didn't get, um, water mains. We didn't get curb and gutter. We didn't get any of that. We got one layer of asphalt and the storm sewer.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jill.
Lyle Wilson, representing the Cannon Falls Cemetery Association, is looking at this spot right there. This area, according to my city map, uh, was never plotted in the original city. It was just, uh, blank space. So, this is my, a, um, family addition. Where the cemetery gave, uh, in favor of the city, the yellow part as an easement. Forty feet by 120, about 72, right there on the cul-de-sac. You know, that easement, I feel, you know, renders the, that complete easement, you know, inconsistent with the cemetery use. Just questioning any assessment at all. About it. Does she got any questions?
What did you get assessed?
1,039 and change.
Same as the rest of them in that area.
This easement was, uh...
1986.
I can't remember. Is there a road there that goes down to the cemetery?
No, all the access is off Highway 19.
Off Highway, okay.
No, there, there's no road there.
Okay. I didn't think so.
No access, nobody's using that to get in and out of the cemetery, then?
Right.
Uh, the bank is considerable.
Okay.
Whether or not, yellow spot.
Right.
Yeah, it takes a pretty good...
Yeah, it takes a pretty good denture.
Okay.
Questions?
Add it to our list.
Yep.
Ron Merkins, live at 520 North First Street, which would probably be... That would be right there. And then our, um, proposed assessment was $4,230. And it called for streets, sidewalks, storm sewers, sanitary sewers, water mains and service lines. Well, come to find out, we didn't need all that. And we just ended up with the new road and curb and gutter. And our final assessment was 4,011. And I just, uh, was hoping that I could talk into lowering that, where we didn't need all the stuff that was proposed.
Greg, can you address what was done?
Yep. So, on First Street, we had proposed to do in some water. After we talked to Mr. Merkins and Public Works, we determined there was plenty of hydrants in the area. So, First Street was reconstructed. It did not have curb before. It now has curb and gutter and pavement to the end. But 520 and 521, their water and sewer services come other ways, and were not in any of the mains we dealt with. So, we assigned them street and storm costs, because we added storm sewer in Minnesota to take some of the water away from going down First Street. And that's how we calculated Mr. Mercer and his neighbors' assessment, was street and storm. It's like you said, he didn't get everything, because there was no sewer in there. All the lots were already served, so we didn't have sewer to replace. We did not run water down there, because we felt there was added coverage with the hydrants that we had in place by the bike trail over on Second, or the ones we were replacing as part of the street project. So, there were a couple that were in the middle, where the, it was street and storm, because it was street, it was a reconstruct. This was just pavement, gravel, a little bit of both. It's got curb and gutter now. It is an actual street.
Okay, so it wasn't just a mill and overlay, it was a true reconstruct?
No, we ran curb to the end. We worked with him and his neighbor on the street grade, tried to match the yards as best we could. We put a curb, uh, that what we call valley gutter up here on the north side of Minnesota. I think before, water from Minnesota Street might turn that corner and run north down the hill. The valley gutter and catch basin up here, try to keep the Minnesota Street, water in Minnesota Street, limit what ruts down First Street, because it's First Street, it's kind of straight down the hill. And Ron has put in some landscaping, and it kind of survived and dealt with the water that comes down the street in the past, and we left all that in place. We stopped the project before that.
Any other questions?
No.
You're looking for an adjustment from the 4,000?
Pardon?
A downward adjustment from the 4,000 that you assessed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Deb Zimmerman, and I live on State Street. I have some of the same concerns as the other. Don't have any frontage on the road, on the roads. Our water goes to State Street somewhere.
Can you point out which property that, that is here?
She'd be right here.
Yep.
Just, uh, west of the condos.
Oh, okay, got it.
Got it. And she just cuts storm sewer?
Or they put a liner in the sewer?
No, they, they were similar to the other alley folks that front state, where they got water or sewer. Most cases got sewer. The water was in the front. We redid the alley, paved the alley, we redid the street on each side. So, as I mentioned before, if they got water or sewer or both, I put them in the reconstruct side. So, they would have the similar discussion that Ms. Ekstrom and the condo kind of had, that we front state, we use the alley, the alley got sewer only.
Correct.
Thank you.
No cost to the property?
Yeah, the city had paved alleys before. We only include alley paving when we were going to do the sewer or water, do the infrastructure underneath. That's why these three were paved, because we were doing the water or sewer underneath them.
Hello, Nick King, 412 East Mill Street. Um, I got two lots up there. We got, uh, the full assessment on both lots, so we got the 14,000, whatever. But the house sits, our house sits a little goofy, so it sits on both the lots. So, it would, um, I'd like it to be reduced to maybe one lot for the charges. And it's right here.
Those two lots.
Mr. King, right?
Yes.
Yes, all right. So, we talked, we were working on the project. He, he lives at 412. He owns the vacant lot to the east. He owns the empty lot to the west, given the terrain. Now, West Lot's probably not buildable. We did, this lot is 55-ish frontage. The zoning over there, I think, is at least 65 for an interior lot. We did put services in there, because between his 412 lot and the other lot, you would have room for two lots. We put them in there with the thinking is, we don't want to dig the road up. If something changed, he says it's not going to change, you know, that's, that's fine. We put in there, because in our opinion, between the two, there could be two buildable lots. This Public Works didn't want to have to dig the street up if there was. If the services never get used, they never get used. That's why he got two lots. He has two parcels. One probably couldn't get built on as it stands, but between the two, you probably could get two out of it. You know, like you said, it might have to take moving the house or getting creative with the property line, but it's a possibility, and mill was a full reconstruct.
The setbacks, I don't think you could build on, between the, my house and the neighbor's house, you wouldn't be able to build on with setbacks.
What was your last name again?
Uh, King, K-I-N-G.
And you got, you weren't being assessed at all for that third lot that's basically unbuildable?
No, that's just up on the hill, so.
Any other questions for Nick? Thanks. Anyone else under the public hearing?
Mayor, I just have a couple of quick comments before you move ahead. Number one is, the council's required to take into account... Right, please? Yep. Number one is, the council's required to take into account everyone's, uh, points and objections about their assessments. And the other side is, the council's also required to be as uniform and consistent as you can among all the properties being assessed. And for all the folks in the audience, anybody who wants to, uh, appeal this to court, you have to file a written objection, either before this meeting or at this meeting. So, if you want to appeal to court, you got to file the objection before the end of this meeting tonight.
And by filing, that means?
You can hand it in to the city here tonight, before the end of this meeting.
Anyone else wishing to address the council under public hearing?
Todd Hanson, 205 East Minnesota Street. I just had a question, because I had, and I, I hadn't kept up with, uh, what the council's doing with the project, but in February, we had received a, uh, letter in mail that said the assessments would be 4,230. And now the latest one was 7,122. I guess I haven't kept up with what, if there's any extra cost to this, or what the deal is with that. If anybody knows.
Greg, can you?
This is the one I received in February.
Okay, and you are at... What, which?
I'm 205 East Minnesota Street, along with all limestone.
Uh, yeah, okay. Um, I'm not sure on that number. That wasn't the number we had in the feasibility report. Feasibility report, we were about 7,500 for the full reconstruct, and he's on Minnesota, so you got the full...
Yep.
The full Monty, so to speak. So, I'm not, I don't know how the number got in the letter. That was not the number in the feasibility report.
What's the date on the feasibility?
I'm just wondering how, how that came up, because I'd like to say I haven't been keeping up with the council meeting or whatever on these, on the project, but how this letter was given out at 4,230, and, and all of a sudden, now it's 7,100.
I read it again. So, this, this is the notice of the improvement hearing, which we sent out at the beginning of the project. And this is actually, the estimated cost of the entire improvement is $4,230,000. We typically don't send the individual assessment out at that point. So, this, so in February, we estimated the cost of the entire project at $4,230,000.
Okay.
And at the, if you came to the hearing, we gave you what we thought the estimates were, that 7,500 amount per parcel. But in the notice for the hearing, the city gives you the entire project cost and the fact that they intend to assess a portion of that.
Okay. That's all my, that's all I have?
All right.
Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to address the council for the assessment hearing? Anyone else wishing to address the council for the assessment hearing? Is there anyone else wishing to address the council for the assess, assessment hearing? If not, at this time, we will close the public hearing, and we will go into discussion.
Lyle, did you, uh, keep track of the each individual? Okay.
So, we have some folks that, uh, definitely, uh, have some good points, but it's up to the council how you guys want to, to handle each assessment and move from there. I mean, the only one that I can see that, uh, shouldn't have been assessed right now, definitely, is, is the cemetery. And, uh, the Cannon Falls Cemetery, I don't know how you come up with, with that price for that little piece of whatever it is, or...
Well, they had about the same frontage, and again, it was an easement talk, doesn't necessarily mean there's not benefit there, but to the attorney's point, I think they probably fall under the statute, or we'd probably have a tough time not arguing that they weren't under the statute as a cemetery.
That one's not a church-owned. Doesn't fall under the statute.
Okay. If that's privately owned, then we, we have a different story.
Is that correct, Lyle?
Right, but it is not a church-owned cemetery, is that correct? Okay, just one clarification, thank you.
But there again, it had, read ahead, about the same frontage as everyone else in that cul-de-sac, whether there's a driveway there or not, the ability is there for them to use it.
Does the statute address association-owned cemeteries?
Well, their, cemeteries are exempt if they are not, uh, for profit. So, if his association is not a corporation, not formed for the purpose of making any money, pays no dividends to any of its members, then they fall under the exemption as well.
Is that the case, Lyle? You guys are not-for-profit?
Exempt, right. Okay, then it will fall under the statutory exemption and cannot be assessed?
Those two cannot be assessed. Okay. So, we want to go through each one again, or do we want to put them all in one and, and make a decision?
I have a question. Um, if, since the cemeteries are going to be gone, and if we potentially lower other peoples, do other people, does everyone else's go up to cover that? You know what?
Or would the city bear that cost?
We bear the cost.
We bear the cost, I believe.
I would think.
Yeah, you're, if you're about to adopt the assessment rule here as it's laid out, those costs are set. So, you, the city would have to absorb the additional cost, unless you want to go back and recalculate and set up a new assessment rule.
Right, so no, the city would absorb it. So, every time we discount anyone's, that will come directly from city... will come directly from city, which means the, the tax base generally will offset the difference. So it will get reallocated from one individual to all individuals within city limits, and that's an important consideration.
And that's happened on other projects.
Of course it has. It happens on everyone, as far as I remember.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll take them one by one, and then, um, the Rapp property.
I can see reducing that, but, you know, there is a benefit to you for your access to that property. I, I, I'm looking at some of these others, maybe cutting it from a one to a point five. If, if we cut it in half, I'd be, I agreeable to that. Because I still think you're, you're benefiting from that.
If we're going to speak to the property owners, then we're going to end up inviting them back up, and this, this public part of it is closed.
The public part's already closed.
No, I know, I just want to explain the, the property that's between is, we agree that city owns that, right?
Hundred percent.
Okay. The reason I didn't buy that property in nineteen ninety-six is there's an old oil and coal bed that sits on that property. Um, I guess if we're going to pursue this any farther, I'm going to pursue a little bit of maybe cleaning it up, that property and the adjacent property. I had, do I have aerial photos of what the railroad used to have on them properties? Um, I just want to bring that to your attention, that, that's why I didn't buy that, because I knew that was going to happen. Once I acquired that property, I would be forced to clean it up. So.
But you've known since you purchased the property about the conditions on the property? On the city-owned parcel?
The city-owned property.
So when you purchased, you were aware of these conditions?
Yeah.
Okay.
So there is a coal, the old coal bed there, you can go dig in that tree area, and there is coal on the ground inside of there, so I just want to bring that to your attention. I will pursue that a little bit.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, well, the Rapp property, what are you, was everybody's suggestion, or do we have a motion to?
Our duty is to attempt to be as even-handed and treat similarly situated property owners similarly, right? To be fair and, right?
Correct.
Okay, so ad hoc discounting is going to be a problem. Do you know what I mean? We have to have an articulable reason why a particular discount would be applied.
I agree.
Um, not, right, so.
Right, and the only cases we have are for both cemetery ones to...
I know, I'm talking about the ones going forward. Cemeteries are done. Okay.
So do we have any idea, I'm sure these situations came up on West Side a couple, two, three years ago. Do we have any idea what we did on situations there to try and keep it even?
Fourplexes, we kept them at a point eight. Remember that?
Yeah.
Aside from the rapper, I think the uniqueness here is the alley component. You know, we've been, we haven't had many projects that had an alley where you had double, we had, the lots had frontage on the front and the back. We did the utilities on one side or the other. We, we did the, you know, we did the water main and Cedar. We did the water and sewer and Grove. So, and, and my opinion, as I stroked earlier, if they did water or sewer, I treated them as, as a reconstruct. But we, you know, to Mr. Lindell's point, we didn't have any on the West Side. The East Side project, we didn't, um, the alleys there, we had a, we had an assessment, but we had done the infrastructure all the way around. So I, just thinking of the other three major projects, I don't think we've had this alley with the frontage we didn't touch question come up.
To address the one question, on previous ones, have we treated multiplex units as point eights in the past?
That's where we got the point eight, was the West Side two project, from, from the attorney.
Probably can't change that because that would be unfair to, to the past residents that were billed that way.
Go back to taking it one by one, right?
Yep. Let me have the Rapp property, we've mentioned that. People want to do there?
Uh, I don't, I don't feel compelled to depart from the assessment based on the perpetual easement that benefits the parcel occupied by Mr. Rapp.
Okay.
Yes, I don't, I don't, in my opinion, just one person's opinion, I don't, I don't see a reason to depart from the assessed amount based on the perpetual easement that benefits your property. So I would vote against diminishing the assessment against your property.
Any other discussion on that?
I don't know if that's a motion, we say, we're not doing eight, one particular motion, but how are we going to ever vote on this?
Right.
Well, I'd recommend that you, any properties that you want to remove from the assessment role or reduce, you, you have a motion to adopt the assessment role with the modification, you redo, you remove X property, Y property, and then you reduce the amount to X property, Y property.
Okay.
Okay.
So we need to determine if we're going to reduce on each one?
Right.
Okay.
Come up with a consensus now, so when the motion is made, you'll know how to make the call.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, the Rapp property, what's the consensus?
Roll call.
Well, as I said, Kyle, the, the easement is the, was a sticking point for me, so there is a benefit, and I guess, I guess I can't really lower it as much as I'd like to, but I don't think that would be.
You are going to acquire some costs for cleanup of those properties, because I will...
Yeah, that's a...
I know what, I know how to deal with these.
That's not part of this portion at this time, so.
Right, I just want to let you guys know that.
Sure, appreciate your feedback. So that's a no, that's a no. John? Want to come back to you?
Come back to me.
Okay.
I'm going to say no. I'm a no.
That's Ford.
I don't know that we have to come back to you, then. There you go, you're off the hook.
Yeah, because overall consensus is, is no adjustment there. Uh, the, made by a cemetery, we've taken care of. Uh, the fourplex, uh, with Mr. Althoff, it's already a point eight.
Right, and he wasn't necessarily arguing for less than point eight. He was arguing for the total amount be lowered, and then point, pay point, point eight of that, basis point of that. So.
We have consensus of the charges there.
The basis for lowering it being that it was not four units, that it was only two units.
There's four units there.
No, I know, but in terms of...
Two lots, but four units, right.
Lots, four units. Not everybody all at once.
I think in this case, the fact that it's two lots is kind of immaterial. We're still going by four units.
By unit, yeah.
Right?
So, um... I could see reducing it down a, a little bit because it's only, essentially, it's only one, a lot with four units, as opposed to two lots, because you can't really, you can't build anymore on there.
But if the number of lots is immaterial, then the number of lots is immaterial.
Right, lots are immaterial.
Right.
You got the four units. In this case, they received a ladder in the back, water didn't come from there, and then they had the mill and overlay where the curb wasn't replaced. So, I mean...
I gotta think this a little bit more.
Well, I would, as, as we treated an earlier project at point eight and did nothing, I don't know how we can do, move this, as much as I understand their argument and what they want to do, but that would be unfair to previous projects where they had to pay, they paid the point eight, whatever it was for that particular project.
The condos on the West Side, the same situation, though?
I don't know.
They got a, they got a full street. They got everything, right?
The condos on the West Side had the street adjacent to them reconstructed, and we did the water in the adjacent street, and that's the street their driveway come off of. They had one set of services that served the fourplex, okay? Here, we did the same thing on Cedar, on the other side of the block, we reconstructed the street. We did their sewer line. We didn't do the water out front, and we did a mill and overlay with some spot repair on the other side of their lot. I think if it was easy, you would have made your decision by now.
Mm-hmm. So are they having four services, or do they have one main? We just did one?
They have one, I believe.
One. And the other one had one. Yep. Are you sure, I remember doing the point eight, but I thought that we took into account that, you know, other parcels that were benefited had one pipe put in, and this one had one pipe, but it served four, and so we divided it differently too. And not just the point eight part, but that we, that we actually did take something off the top. I thought we did.
I do remember on that one, it was an odd-sized connection. It wasn't a standard-sized connection. I, and I think that, uh, we took something into account because of that. I...
Their, their sewer line, I believe, had some, or water had someone on the other end of it too. I think that might have been part of the discussion. It was kind of a...
Okay, it's hard to remember from two years ago.
These four units and the other four units related to street, they've raised the question about an alley. I, I would imagine that the cost of the alley that serves these four units is not a significant cost issue. But we've had alleys raised also as a question on several other assessments here, and as Mike said, if the policy of the city is to be replacing these alleys, is it reasonable to calculate a cost of these alleys and remove them out of the assessments, or no?
We could determine the cost of that, of the alley. The, let's call it the alley pavement, because the alley was gravelled before. But, you know, that, that would be possible.
As I say, I imagine it's not a significant number on a, on a parcel-by-parcel basis, but that would seem consistent if we're paying for the alleys anyway, at least with regards to several property owners here.
That would be one, like a solution that would fit many situations, which would be nice. And we wouldn't have that number tonight, but we could make a motion to reduce it by whatever that amount is for the, couldn't we? Or do we have to know the specific dollar value?
I think you have to, I mean, you could exempt out those parcels and adopt the remainder of the role tonight, and then you could readdress that at a future meeting. I think you have to know the exact amount that you're adopting as the assessment.
Okay, but we could exempt those, like, pause them for a minute while we figure out that cost.
I would favor that.
You did that at the last one.
Yeah.
Okay.
I like that, and that would apply to many of these.
And you could have those numbers for next week's meeting.
Yeah.
That sounds like a good solution.
Better. Yep.
And does that hit?
So I will take, uh, the Althoff or the fourplex should take care of the Ekstrom. Uh...
Zimmerman?
Zimmerman. King.
No, not King.
Not King, not King.
Not King.
Yep, that should take care of those.
And who was right after?
Merkin.
Merkins.
That's not...
That was a full street and gutter.
Right, so that's not. Well, we got a few.
This, this would be applied into all of those parcels, whether or not they came forward tonight. So, because we treat them all the same. So it would be beyond those that just came forward.
Right.
Just for clarification.
Right. Okay.
Will we be able to identify the pars, by parcel number specifically enough to make a motion to pass the assessment role for only those ones that don't, that aren't subject to the alley adjustment? That's going to be tough. I don't think you probably have a list there of just the properties.
I think it'd be easier to list the ones that would be subject to the alley.
Okay.
And we could use this map so everyone can see that.
Yep, okay. Make sure we can actually accomplish any of this this evening.
Right. Okay, the Merkins.
Is that the fourth?
Uh, no, the Merkins was the Cora, Bang, Gutter, and Stormshore. Full street. That was on First Street there. It was, he was assessed four thousand and eleven before the full street.
As was Shop and...
Yep.
I guess I feel like the four thousand's already discounted to reflect the fact that he didn't get the services. Otherwise, it would have been seventy-one, twenty-two, sixty-five. So.
I, I guess I'd be against reducing it down any further because it got most of, got basically the reconstruct, and he's not charged everything, not everything was needed.
I'd concur with that.
You know?
Yep. All right, that one will not be reduced. Uh, we've talked about the Zimmerman, uh, the King parcel.
So, all right, there's two units, two parcels, two full assessments. One of them is square, right? Like, the one parcel for, or one unit for seventy-one, that's just, that's done, all the work's done. It's about, what about this extra little scrap of a parcel that got some utilities run to it for, you know, I mean, I can see the potential benefit. It's long, long-term, but, um, I could see discounting the assessment for that second parcel, for the scrap of the parcel.
I agree.
Um, can't build on it. You'd have to tear down one house in order to build on it. I don't know what the judicious number for that is, but you could cut it in half, and you could, so he gets one and a half full assessments for essentially, I mean, it's kind of like having one and a half parcels.
Yeah.
Greg, what, or maybe for the property owner, is that a sixty-foot lot? Because it looks like it is, the one to the east?
It was like fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
I, I think it's just under, I want to say it's about fifty-five. I don't know if it's a full sixty.
You know where the extra land would have gone to? Did it go to 412?
Yeah, I would assume it went to 412.
An original town lot, and it's sixty feet, it's probably an assessable unit unless the house is built over that line, the west line of that vacant lot.
The house does sit at an angle. I don't know how close to or on that east property line it sits, but it does sit at an angle on the 412 lot.
The question would be whether the lot to the east is truly an original town lot at sixty feet. If it is, it would seem to be an assessable unit.
I don't think we're arguing, I'm not suggesting it's not assessable. I think it is assessable. I think we could.
But as a full, but as a full unit.
I, yeah, I'm not disagreeing. Right.
So is that, so does the house sit on both lots? I mean, do we know that? See seal?
On both lots. It sits crooked on both lots, so it, it takes up both the lots, you know.
But hangs into the sixty-foot lot?
Yep.
Okay.
So, there's... Correct. I'd have to tear it down, or I'd have to move the neighbor's house over to put it there, because there's, there's no room between, for set-asides or anything such as that. And, and our driveway comes off of Vine Street, so we don't have any access to, to Mill Street, so.
Were there services put into that lot? He's saying yes.
Yes.
I would hate to pay seven thousand dollars for a potential, you know, a hundred years down the road.
Right, that's why I'm not proposing nothing for that second lot, because it is a lot. It is, it is an assessable unit, and we did put services in it, and someday, someone could accrue a benefit specific to the work that was done at that second lot. On the other hand, well, I already made my case, so.
I mean, the lot's buildable, but not at this time.
Right.
And there are, uh, utilities run to the lot.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, based on what Dave was telling us here, how do you, even if you were to reduce one of the lots, how do you, how do you fairly do it? I mean, it's one thing for the alleys...
How do you fairly do it? I mean, it's one thing for the alleys. We can figure that all out, but this. And Nick, I don't know if you're the one that built the home here or whoever did, kind of silly to build it on two lots, but that's.
When we have factually unique situations like this, we don't, there isn't a precedent that binds us, so we can, in discretion, come up with what we think is the right thing to do. So, for example, the Fourplexes, when we came up with 80% the last time, that was the first time we came up with that. So we can do and I don't, I bet there aren't that many other homes in Cannon Falls City Limits that are straddling two lots. There might be. And we may come up against it.
I mean, you got on Minnesota Street, there's one property that has two lots involved with it. But nothing, like you say, is that way. There it's an open lot. We ran services to it. They were assessed for two lots because they complained to me about it. They weren't here tonight, so I'm assuming they're just paying it. But it did happen on Minnesota Street, but not in this situation.
And we've seen variance requests and lot combinations, lot subdivisions, minor subdivisions for lots that are less than the standard of 60 feet wide. So if there are services there, and I'm hypothetic, I know what the frontage is, let's say it's 50 feet. Certainly, the buyer or the current owner could come in and seek a variance to create a buildable lot there to connect to these utilities. So there's, yeah, it's a question of there's some value there, but how much? Because we don't know. He's going to keep the property for now, maybe not ever sell it. It's hard to know, you know, what the value really is.
How much of a house your house is on that smaller one lot, roughly?
Of course, the GAS is not 100% accurate anyhow, so. Well, Cedar, do you have a amount you think would be fair for this?
I already said. So now it's your job.
Cedar said a half. For the other one.
The second one. Yeah, I think a half probably would make sense.
I'd say that's. Yeah, I can. Okay, I can live with that.
I agree with that, too, I guess.
So we have consensus to make that a one and a half. Any other discussion? Okay. And Todd Hanson was happy with his explanation, so at this time, the chair will take a motion to approve adopt the assessments. Schedule minus the exemptions and changes recommended by council. Is that the right way to put it, Dave?
Well.
Sounds specific enough.
Yeah, we need a little more specificity in terms of, I understand that you're taking out the churches from the assessment roll.
Right.
You're taking out the properties that benefited from the alley. Is that correct?
Right.
Various alleys.
Have we identified those by address or PIN number or somehow?
I don't think they were taken out. You wanted them adjusted.
Right.
But we're taking out for this approval tonight.
Right.
We're pausing them until the next meeting.
So that would be all the parcels between state and the alley on these three blocks.
That's right.
Yep. And how many parcels is that? Nine. One. Fourplex is a second.
Incorporate the map by reference in our motion, can't we? And indicate that it's the parcels abutting the alleys in these three blocks? Then we don't have to list them. See herein incorporated by reference?
As long as everyone can understand exactly what that means. Do we have a map that has addresses or PIN numbers on it?
This has addresses. Would they be the interior lots? Because if they're on Grove or on Cedar, we reconstructed that side street. That's a corner lot.
Right.
So these would be interior internal lots that are on the alley, with the exception of the condos?
I think so. Interior only.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I think. Would that be sufficient enough? We can list them.
I think we want pins, because we want it to reflect.
Beg them.
All right.
All right, so. Nine parcels. The 604, that pin is five. Two zero. Five two one. Five two one.
That's you, Jill.
Five eighteen.
Be 318 and then the condos.
318 and the condos. Five two one. Four zero one, four four zero.
Could you repeat that, please? Five two one.
Four zero one.
It should be 52, and then 140, 1440. Got it.
Those you could get off the.
Yeah, those are 523980010. 523980020. 523980030 and 523980040.
That's an old number. We don't.
Yeah, it doesn't, because the other one's out. Patient's behind him.
And then I would include. That was the old one before the condos were built.
Was it? Okay.
And then 310 State, Jeff.
310 State. Five two one. Four one four.
Hey. So. Need a motion?
Yep.
Oh, that that we've got. Oh, right, good question.
Yep, probably need that one, too.
Right, which one? Anybody?
It would be the.
Of Nick King's two. Why can't I find it?
Smallest one.
I think the one on the east.
There it is.
The east one.
It's either 110 or 120.
Yep.
Would be the five two one.
Okay, so the 120 is the one that we would reduce by half.
Reduce to 1.5.
And again, I was looking up something else. I'm sorry.
It would be five two one.
What did you not see? The 1303.
Do we need the cemeteries on there, too?
No.
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 They're.
They're just automatic?
Okay.
I'll show it up in our parcel list.
Done.
What was the address on that?
I wonder if it has its a separate street address. Nick, you got two separate addresses there? You probably only have one, right? So you don't want to jot it by address, because that'll be the house that we are assessing a full one to.
A different one we're talking about.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm fixing to die.
That one ends in.
1303.
1303. We're not seeing it on the list.
Yeah, I didn't. I didn't see a 303 either.
That's what I'm questioning, because I don't see it on my list. I don't, um, no.
No, that was early in the. 330. That was about the
Okay, so.
Fifth one you read off.
All right, probably was 518.
518. It was the fifth one.
That pin is 521. 330.
Yeah, I think last time you said 303. That was the confusion.
330?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So this time, we'll take the motion then to approve the adopt the assessment for the 2018 Street Projects Resolution 2396, excluding the two cemeteries and recalculating the lots 51401180, 521401200, 521401211, 521401320, 521401330, 31, or 521401440, and then 52140420. And then looking at reducing lot 521402120. Is that correct?
Oh, I didn't write down the parcels. Sounds good. So moved?
It is.
Second.
Okay, have a motion by Cedar. Second by Derek. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those?
Greg, thank you.
Thank you.
And just, and Linnell can correct me, but if anyone wants to know, the timetable to prepay assessments without interest starts now for the next 30 days?
30 days.
Payable at City Hall?
Yes, I'll be sending out a letter for notice of final assessments, and in that letter, it will indicate the options for prepayment. I can just quickly go over it. You have the option to pay it within 30 days, and then it will be interest-free. You need to make that payable to the city, and you can either mail it in or drop it off. For those that do nothing, if you if I don't hear from you, it will go on your taxes, and it will be for 15 years at 5 and 1/4% interest. You can pay that off anytime thereafter. Interest will be until December 31 of the year that that payment is made. So then it would eliminate future occurrences on your taxes. Greg, did I miss anything? If you have any questions, please feel free to give me a call. I know this is kind of a confusing process, and I'll certainly be glad to discuss it with anyone. There's also an option for deferment, and that those criteria will be outlined in the letter as well. If you're eligible for that, we would need to have that filled in or form completed and turned in as soon as possible, so. Okay, thank you.
Linnell, just to clarify then, for the ones that we're not going to work on till next week.
Yep.
That the time clock for that will start will start then for them.
Okay. All right, if there's nothing else on the public on Resolution 2396, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Items of this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. The folks at home, the consent agenda is item A, adjusting correct claims for the accounting period ending November the 8th, 2018. Item B in the meeting minutes for the October 16th, 2018 City Council meeting. Item C, Resolution 2392, authorizing the 2019 city license renewals. Item D, Resolution 2393, supporting preservation of the through-traffic route. Item E, improving MOU for Lawrence Meats. Item F, rescue truck sale. Item G, surveillance camera system for Public Works Department. Item H, Resolution 2394, canvass returns and declare election results from the city general election. Item I is approve special assessment agreements. Item J, Resolution 2395, approving a cooperative snow removal agreement with Mendat. And item K, approve fire department pension increase. Are there any items anybody wishes to move down to?
I'll hold on A.
Hold on A.
A.
That'll become item 8B. Any other items?
I'd like to hear about G.
And that will become item 8C.
A.
A and then G.
Hey, with the exception of items A and G, Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those? Carries. With this on the council business, item A is excessive work hours worked by exempt employees during storm event.
Hmm, yes, you do.
So, Council, if you recall, this was previously brought to you. You asked that the hours be set aside until we figured out what program the city would be eligible. At this point, we've been informed that we would be eligible under the state program. When the state got done doing their assessments for all of the communities and areas impacted by the storm, it did not hit the $8 million mark, which was what was needed for a federal disaster. And so I have started my process of getting the information from the state on their program, what needs to be included, matrices that were used for vehicles and equipment and all of that. And one of the things that I need to find out from Council is if you want the excessive hours worked by the exempt employees, as outlined with the policy, to be paid out and such included in the cost to the state for reimbursement of 75%. Or if you want to not include it, in which case then those impacted exempt employees would just offset those excessive hours in the upcoming pay cycles to recoup back as much as possible.
Have to offset before the end of the year?
I don't know what tomorrow will bring.
I know that, but I'm saying.
The policy is nonspecific. It just as exempt employees, we are, you know, have the ability to offset hours worked in excess.
And the policy says we may. We don't have to do any of this if we so wish.
Well, you need to set it aside. You've asked us to hold them, so you need to clarify whether you want to pay or not pay, and then staff will know how to treat the hours.
Right, no, I get that, but we have, you list only two options. There's more than two options here, so, in my opinion.
Well, if you have additional options, then yeah.
Yeah.
Feel free to bring them up, and I'm just trying to figure out what I need to submit to the state as I tally up those costs for them.
Because my opinion is I have no problem with paying you and Mike and Tim 75% that we will be reimbursed. The other 25%, I think we should not give you any money or time off, because I think that extra 25% would be a slap in the face of the hundreds of volunteers that helped out during this crisis.
Unfortunately, we don't have that option. We're only allowed to receive 75% of whatever money would be paid out by the city. The city has to incur before we can seek a.
Right. So if the city only pays 75%, we only get 75% of the 75%. We would never be, we would never have the state pay all of it. The state will not pay all of what. The state will not pay all of what we pay for their overtime. See what I'm saying?
No, I see what you're saying, and that's, that's what I'm saying.
So if you, if you said we're only going to pay 75%, I can only submit that 75% for 75%.
Right.
So we would not get 100% of that 75.
Okay. Right.
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 And, and the idea...
Okay. Right.
The idea that it's insulting to volunteers to pay people to do their jobs is so fallacious. That means that because there are candy strippers in a hospital, I can't pay a doctor. That's a false equivalence that, that was made at the meeting where we talked about it the first time, and it's a false equivalence to make it now. These are their, these are their jobs. Volunteers make a choice about whether or not to come, and we're so grateful that they did, but it's not an equivalent thing.
Right, but under the personnel policy, we also may pay them. We do not have to pay them. It says that specifically in the personnel policy.
And that's why the options in front of you are to choose to, to pay, in which case we will submit for 75% of that expenditure, or not to pay, in which case then staff will follow the policy and offset.
But there's not this third option where we neither pay you and you just, you just give us basically those overtime hours for free. That's not an option, right?
Would not seem to be within policy, no.
No.
And they are correct on that, Bill.
No, I, I'm not arguing now, don't...
Oh, I think you are. You're saying that you want them to comp those hours and not take any time off and not offset any hours.
Right, what I was meaning is that they get paid, they get paid whatever, you know, we get reimbursed from the state. They'll, they'll submit, say it's $1,000, the state pays us 750, we distribute it to them.
No, the state reimburses. The state doesn't pay us in advance, so in order to do what you're describing, we'd be defrauding the state.
No, 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 I am, but I think you know what I was...
Do I?
No. I don't know.
I understand what you're saying, Bill, but in essence, yes, we would be defrauding the state. We cannot submit a bill for something we haven't paid.
Right, and I understand the state pays us later.
Yes.
We have to make the decision now.
Right.
I strongly disagree with Cedar's argument about volunteers and who gets paid and who doesn't, because I think she's nuts on this, but...
Well, I mean, that's a completely different story, but at this point, we need to make a decision to, to allow him to put the total amount of hours into the, what we're claiming to the state so that we can at least get 75% of that amount back. If not, we don't, basically, we don't get anything back if you don't put it in.
Right, no, I, yeah.
I mean, I think that they should, I mean, to me, I mean, I don't get, I don't get a vote, but in my opinion, the time and the effort and the extra hours that some of these guys put in, I was there, I know what they, what they did, and I think we owe it to them to do that.
And we're talking about after reimbursement from the state, about $1,600. So I would make a motion that we compensate these employees, and we seek reimbursement from the state for the entirety of their overtime hours, and thank you.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Who was the second?
Derek.
Any further discussion?
So, just to be clear, this is for the submittal? Right, this, if this, if this passes, then I will provide the information to our payroll people so that they can process what they have to do, and then we'll calculate what those are and include those numbers in what we make as our claim to the state, correct? Okay.
Any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-2. All right, that moves us on to Item 8B, which is the claims.
Oh, I just wanted to mention, I looked it over, according to my calculations, were rough. You spent about $80,000 already on tree removal, or you, how's that come along? Is most of it done, or?
Yeah, I'd say 80% complete, I mean, in staff time, no. I mean contractor work, I'd say 80% or more complete. You know, we're still using RonSafe to do a lot of our work, and then Ryan Murphy, I think, has some Eastside bills he's got to submit yet. And, but it's, it's close.
So we wait till we get all done, turn it into the state, all at once, or?
Well, we still have contractors that, you know, we haven't received billing, so I mean, that's what's paid. It doesn't necessarily mean that's now what's in the hopper being processed. And so that will get paid, and then, yes, we will be calculating up all those components submitted to the state. We will not, with the FEMA program, they essentially calculate everything in advance. Federal government cuts us a check for 75% of it, and then the state audits and does the remaining 25 based on receipts and that type of stuff. In this case, we will have to incur the expenses, then we can submit them and receive our reimbursement. I have not done a state process before, but from just dealing with the contact from the state, the process has actually been easier to get answers than it has from when we've done the, the federal programs. So our intent is, once we get the calculation for wages and all that stuff figured out, equipment, we'll be making that submission along with all the contractor payments that have been made up to date. And then they would reimburse us, then we would just keep submitting from that point bills received. So I don't know, I know Klingup-wise, Mike's, I think we're about that 80%. Now, there is still stuff that is going to end up having to get done later, stumps to be removed, all of those things, but...
We got, we got weathered out now. I mean, if we get maybe a few warm days, we can continue, but most of the yards are frozen up. So we'll continue some tree work over the winter that we can get to. But we will be, I mean, I've set a target date for June 1st is what we're, we're kind of talking about, to make sure everything's done and wrapped up with the boulevard work, the reconstruct of the boulevards after we pull the stumps out. So we'll, we'll still see mostly staff time, I would say, in the spring. I mean, contractors should be wrapping up with us within the next, I mean, hopefully by the end of the year, is the target date for that.
One of the items Mike and I have talked about is the stump removal, grinding, should that be contracted, or should the city purchase, you know, the equipment to do it, and I think it was about $15,000 to, to purchase one. You know, would be able to submit the hourly use and get reimbursed by the state. The state won't pay us the $15,000 to buy it, but they would certainly reimburse us for the usage operating it. And then, of course, the city would be left with a stump grinder that they could use, you know, going forward if they chose, or, you know, you could sell later at some point. But I think that's something Mike's contemplating and will probably take into his Public Works Commission at some point in the next month or two. Once they get, you know, into the middle of plowing season where they aren't going to be doing any grinding until, you know, spring. So just something to be aware of.
Any other discussion on the adjusting correct claims for the accounting period ending November 8, 2018? And if not, Chair will take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
By Bill, seconded by Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carries, that moves us on to Item 8C, which is the surveillance cameras.
This was, so I, I planned to do this, was following suit a little bit with what we've done at other city buildings. This one, library, and fire and EMS, we've been putting surveillance cameras in down there. We've got, we've got nothing right now down at Public Works.
We might have something.
It's pretty obvious. Yeah, so I completed the fence project when we did the dog park. I am coming because we also had a gap in the fence, you know, in the back that was about 60 feet wide. It's fenced now, that's in, it's complete. So I just, I just saw, we've, coming into this role, there's been some previous issues down at Public Works that I think we've spent a lot of staff time and police department time investigating and all kinds of stuff going on that if we had a few cameras in place, I don't know that we would have had to do any of that, you know, and things would have been more cut and dry. So I put the, I had Onsite, and I work with Jeff and Joe pretty extensively on angles where we should be, how we should catch things at the gates, going on by the buildings. We don't have anything in the buildings. I didn't want to violate any kind of a union or open meeting or closed meeting laws, anything like that. So there's nothing inside the actual building, it's all exterior, just so if people need to sit down and have a private meeting, they can, and I'm not going to be accused of watching them or spying on them or something like that. And then my, my thought is most of this equipment is mounted on or benefiting the treatment plant. So my breakdown will probably be about 50%, you know, water, wastewater treatment plant. Of two to three of the cameras, depending on how we get the angles set up, when we do it, will benefit the police department on their impound lot, and then the other few will come out of like parks and streets funds, because they'll be around the park shop and watching some of our... And I shouldn't say, there's a couple in the garages watching our equipment, but not in like our break rooms, hallways, bathroom areas, anything like that, and so. That's, that was my intent, I guess, to, to put this system in.
Yeah, seems like a good plan. Seems affordable, frankly, for what you're getting to, so.
Yeah, we actually got our security cameras installed by Onsite in June, and they are very affordable. They'll come out and they'll reposition your cameras for you, and if there are any technical issues, their, their tech support's pretty good. And I like that we have cameras. We've had a few issues since they were installed, and it's been really helpful for, for me to be able to go back and catch the issues, and then Joe can just download something and then go issue a ticket to a trespasser. Or we can find somebody stole our flowers, you know, things like that.
Did you find those people?
No.
Okay.
We didn't unfortunately, but you know.
Next time.
Next time.
All right, if there's no further discussion, Chair will take a motion to approve Item 8C, these surveillance cameras.
Seconded.
Motion by Mars, seconded by Ken. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Move on to reports. Greg? Greg, just one question for you. When are they going to remove all those road signs from all the roads? Because you still got some of them that have road closed and...
I will ask them again tomorrow. I mean, he's paying rent on them. I would think you'd get them out there, it's possible.
Well, I mean, you got some of them still in the middle of the streets.
Okay. Because we moved a few...
No, they're still going down from, on Cedar, they're going down to Minnesota, I mean, to Water Street from Minnesota. There's two of them there.
And there's a hay loader sitting in one spot too, yeah.
So, yeah.
Don't want that there all winter.
Wouldn't want them to freeze to the, to the street.
Bring the flatbed. Just we've got the heads up for Thursday afternoon, we're doing the Deck the Falls garland, so there'll be some traffic congestion starting after 1 o'clock downtown. We all know, Excel's coming out to help us out with that, so we appreciate their help with that. Should make it go pretty good. We put it all together this afternoon, got the res ready to go, the snowflakes are up.
The snowflakes look so good, by the way, I meant to say that.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing them lit up at night, and that'll be nice, so that'll be soon. And then like Kyle said, we've got, there were some complaints I took on the tree last year and how that was lit up, so we're putting some focus into that. So we did get, we did get lights donated to us, so I'll have that one in the next council meetings. Hopefully they're going to get the check to us for the, the purchase we made on new LED lights for that tree and a topper for it too, so we can, the, the top blew off, so we have to put something there now to make it look nice. So we got that coming up, that's all I got.
All right, so we've got a lot going on at the library for the next few weeks. What is today? Toys for Tots, we are collecting, collection place for Toys for Tots, and that will begin on Thursday. Also, I am going to be teaching a craft class on wire-wrapped pendants at 5:30. They look really cool, so. If you signed up for it, this is your reminder. I'll actually be calling people tomorrow. The, on Friday, there's going to be a teen board game night per the request of teens at 5:30. On Saturday at 10:30 in the morning, there's going to be a talk about when food is more than food. The, there is a Natural Foods co-op in Faribault that has gotten some national renown, and the owner, I cannot remember his name, is going to be coming and speaking about food and his co-op and, and locally sourcing food and whatnot, so it should be pretty cool, so please come. And we have started a tail wagging tutors, so we have a therapy dog who comes into the library every other Wednesday, and kids can read to him. It's a really good way to promote literacy, especially for reluctant readers, and, you know, kids love dogs, and he's a really nice dog. He's very friendly. So we are, we just started it last week. Our next session is next Wednesday at 3:30. We still have a couple of openings for that particular one, so if you want to sign up your child for about 15 minutes of reading to a dog and petting a dog, please call the library. We'll be closed, of course, Thursday, Friday, just like all of the city offices, I believe. And we, I have more. I'll just say that's enough until the next meeting, okay?
I'll be bringing your Toys for Tots boxes over later this week.
Uh, what?
Your Toys for Tots boxes.
Okay, sweet, we know where to put them.
Yep.
Well, the weather's going to warm up, but it'll get cold and snowy again, so just a reminder to people, when we have a plowing event, to make sure that their cars are off the streets. Joe apparently is already eyeing up all the, the signs sitting on the roadway that he wants to snag up for towing. But in, you know, the serious context, we don't want to tow anybody's car. We just want them off the streets so that when Public Works comes out to plow, they don't have to swerve or go around vehicles. They can clear them curb to curb. That's the primary reason that we take it in tow. And then Kyle already talked about Deck the Falls, as did Mike, and we have this again in a week, so we can talk about it then as well.
Dave, you got anything for us?
I have nothing.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks.
I have nothing.
We have the park board meeting this coming Thursday, so I hope to have people come, and if they have questions, we'll do our best to answer them.
I'd just say, congratulations to the Bomber Football Team for making the state tournament. They played a heck of a game Saturday, from what I understand, and lost in the fourth quarter, but good job of finishing up the year strong, guys. And I'd like to congratulate everybody that was elected in the election last week. So I hope that you guys can, in January, have your opportunity to, to take over and do a great job. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll take about a five-minute break, and then we'll start into the work session.